We will now begin the special session. To start, we are pleased to welcome Dr. Pancage J. Pasrika, Chair, Department of Medicine, Mayo Clinic, for his presentation.
Good afternoon. I want to thank the organizers and the Japanese government for inviting me to give this talk. It's a pleasure to be in Japan again. It's one of my favorite countries, and I'm particularly excited by what I'm seeing in terms of the spirit of innovation. I was asked to give a talk on how to navigate the healthcare innovation path in the USA. And frankly, this could take about a week to do, but I will try to do it in about 25 minutes. So bear with me. So what I'm going to talk about today is the US healthcare market overview by three main sectors. The challenges that you might face, both in terms of regulatory as well as reimbursement barriers. What it takes to build a successful startup? How long it takes? And how do you actually become successful? I.e., what is your exit strategy? And then finally, a summary for entrepreneurs considering entry into the US market. And then a couple of words about how you can partner with a Mayo Clinic. And if you have time, questions and answers. So the three major healthcare business sectors in the US, or anywhere in the world for that matter, are drug, pharma, small molecule drugs to large molecule biologics. But some of you may be surprised to know that 90% of prescriptions in the US are generics. And specialty drugs, which are defined as costing more than $950 per month, and that includes emerging forms of cell therapy, account for only 3% of prescriptions, but 51% of spending. The other sector, of course, is the medical device sector. That includes both therapeutic and diagnostic applications. And by end user, the hospitals and clinic segment accounts for the largest revenue share of this. Amongst this, the diagnostic segment, particularly aided by artificial intelligence, is projected to grow the fastest in the next 10 years. And then finally, we are all excited about digital health, which is actually a mishmash, a heterogeneous group consisting of telemedicine, electronic health records, mobile health applications, and wearable devices with or without powering by AI. So if you break down the US healthcare market by sector, 71%, almost 640 billion, is dominated by the pharma sector. Next is the medical device sector, about 20% of the market. And just a little under 10% is the digital health market. And growth trends are fairly healthy. Pharma CAGR is about 6.15%. Devices is about the same. But the largest expected growth is in the digital health market, nearly 12% annualized growth rate. Now, each one of these sectors has its own relatively specific and unique challenges. And let's start with the regulatory challenges. For pharma, the most important is the complex manufacturing and quality control efforts that the FDA requires. Starting from a small operation to large-scale manufacturing is a huge task. And you have to really conform in terms of quality, safety, and efficacy, which is very, very resource-intensive and difficult to meet consistently. And then finally, maintaining data integrity through the lifecycle is key and something that a lot of small companies forget at the onset. Now, the FDA does offer some accelerated approval pathways for breakthrough therapies or fast-track therapies. But these are not easy. Between 1998 and 2013, 41% of drugs approved through the fast-track process, subsequently received safety warnings or were withdrawn, compared to 19% of drugs through standard evaluation. So regulatory requirements in the pharma industry are very stringent and complex with extensive clinical trial requirements and lengthy approval processes. When it comes to devices, the pathway is more clear-cut. As you know, the FDA has classified devices into three categories. Class 1, which are low-risk and require only general controls. These are, for instance, bandages or standard stethoscopes. And then there's the class 3, which is high-risk, which has the highest, most stringent regulatory requirements. And that's because it needs what's called pre-market approval, or PMA. But the vast majority of devices fall under class 2, which are moderate or controlled risk. And these generally require pre-market notification and not approval. And the commonest form of pre-market notification is the 510K process, which means if you have a device and you want to get into the market, you have to find what is called a predicate. A device that has already been in existence, has passed safety and quality standards, and your device is very similar to that. Or the FDA has developed a list of devices to which your device can correspond. So the PMA is not as simple as class 1, but it still has fairly easy pathways to go to the market. But this process is getting increasingly difficult because of the reports that link faulty devices to millions of injuries and nearly 100,000 deaths over the last decade. So newer, potentially riskier devices can be based on equivalence to older technology. But this is kind of representing the twilight zone because some of these rules and regulations are going to change. Next year, the FDA will mandate ISO compliance for CGMP for devices. And if you're a device entrepreneur trying to get into the US market, here are some common submission errors that you should avoid. Inconsistency with documentation, not using the FDA checklist, failing to provide expected testing results, and underestimating the risk management required. There's also new 510K guidance, the pre-market notification, and predicate selection. The choice of an existing device to compare yourself to is going to become a very, very important topic. And with that will come new clinical testing requirements, particularly for implantable devices. So higher standards are expected. So in summary, device regulation is well-established, but still quite complex and probably likely to become more complex in the next few years. What about digital health? Everybody's talking about digital health. Everybody thinks this is a fast, easy way to do business in medicine. That may or may not be true. There are lots of categories in digital health, from digital therapeutics to digital diagnostics, patient monitoring, care support, health and wellness. And these can take many different embodiments. Mobile health, wearable technologies, telemedicine, artificial intelligence, augmented or virtual reality. And this all qualifies as SAMDs, software as medical device, and not SIMDs, which is software in medical device. And then there's another whole category of digital health, which is the healthcare system and enterprise, which includes the health system, clinical softwares, and the operational softwares. Those are highly specialized and have their own regulatory pathways. The problem with digital health today is that while the FDA still classifies them in the same way it classifies devices, most products operate in a gray area without clear oversight. And there are very complex requirements, particularly when it comes to privacy in the US. The HIPAA coverage, for instance, automatically will represent a violation if you have a website, a healthcare website, and you can identify where that message is coming from in terms of the patient. That is an automatic violation. Now, that means almost all the companies that have third-party trackers in the US are in fact violating the law. So the FDA is now experimenting with new approaches, and they are shifting scrutiny from pre-market to post-market oversight, which means not what you tell them before you get approval, but what you do afterwards. And they're focusing on the firms, the companies themselves, rather than the product. They want to know whether the firms are behaving as good citizens and will maintain and establish a good track record. And finally, the FDA is outsourcing some of the review functions to third-party certifiers. And this is because of capacity issues. While the FDA has cleared over 100 mobile health products in the last few years, as an example, there are approximately 165,000 health-related apps available just for Apple alone or Apple and Android. And this was a few years ago. With 1.7 billion downloads estimated in 2017. That's very hard for any agency, any government, to keep up with. So the regulatory framework for SAMD products remains in flux, creating uncertainty for developers. Well, from regulation to reimbursement, those are the two big challenges that you have to take into account when you're starting a company. And healthcare reimbursement in the US is complex. Third-party payers, government programs, and private insurance cover medical costs, and the patients seldom pay out of pocket. And this includes government programs like Medicare and Medicaid and private commercial insurance companies. The key components are coverage. You have to really apply for coverage, which means your product has to be approved by the payer. You also have to have a code. You just can't say, "I've got a drug," or "I've got a device." Without a code, it's not going anywhere. And then you've got to figure out what is it that you'll actually get paid. And this is separate from the regulatory approval. So there's a regulatory approval, but that's not the end of the story. The real challenge often begins with a reimbursement approval, getting the coverage, getting the codes. And this is not just about safety and effectiveness, but cost-effectiveness. So here's an example of how complex it is. Public programs like Medicare and Medicaid cover 30% of US citizens. Private insurances, the employers themselves or the marketplace, covers 56%. And about 9% of the population is uninsured. Now, I'm not going to go into how complex the government payer systems are, but there are four parts to Medicare, and each of theirs has different approval processes if you have a drug or device. Medicare is becoming increasingly stringent in terms of what it is allowing to be in its approval list. And so it's almost half of the drugs in the US are not approved by Medicare Part D. Drug products must meet reasonable and necessary standards based on clinical and scientific evidence, which I said is different than the regulatory standards. And payers focus on evidence of safety and effectiveness. Formulary placement, will an insurer allow your drug to come in the formulary, is a very complicated process. And you must show clinical differentiation, something better than what already exists, to justify the cost. And each one of these has what we call PNT committees, pharmacy and therapeutic committees, that make coverage determinations. Although the same within 180 days, a lot of times you fail the first go. And this is because the prescription drug business is complex with many fingers in the pie. It's not just simply that you're a drug manufacturer and you're selling it to a pharmacy. There are insurers who have to pay for it. There are middlemen, wholesalers, pharmacy benefit managers, all of whom have a finger in the pie. So for every $100 that you spend on a drug in the USA, the manufacturer actually only gets a profit of about $15. And the rest of it goes to insurers, pharmacy benefit managers, pharmacies themselves, and some to wholesalers. So complex negotiations are required if you want to have a drug approved with multiple stakeholders and varying requirements. For device innovation, it has its own challenges that differ significantly from drugs. There is a lack of specific payment rates. Most medical devices do not have specific payment rates under Medicare. Instead, the payment is combined with the associated medical procedure, and that amount can vary substantially. There is no effective mechanism by which a device can get paid if you don't have a code for the procedure itself or for the tools that you use for that procedure. And these are signed by either the Center for Medicare Services or the American Medical Association. It's a lengthy and costly procedure, and you must be familiar with it if you need to try and get your device in the market. But the biggest problem for a device in surgery particularly is what we call the DRG payment system. This is a bundled payment model. It reimburses the hospitals a fixed amount regardless of the actual treatment cost. So if you have a new surgical device, it will be reimbursed under the existing DRG code typically. So you may have millions invested in that device, but if the DRG payment remains unchanged, the hospital, if it uses your device, will undergo significant financial loss. Therefore, hospitals have put together these value analysis committees, VACs, which evaluate new technologies based on multiple criteria. And you have to show cost-effectiveness. So this is something you have to work with as a device manufacturer, is the VAC, not simply the FDA or the insurance companies. Because if you don't get it through the VAC, you're not going to sell your device. Now, there's some reforms in the making. There's this NTAP, the new technology add-on payment, which recognizes that if you have a new life-saving device, you cannot pay the same amount that you've been doing. And so the FDA has a process by which it can potentially approve your device and give you an additional payment, which is typically 65% or 75% off your cost in addition to the standard DRG payment. Now, what about digital health? This has the most complex reimbursement landscape and that's because it's a chicken-and-egg problem. To commercialize digital therapeutics, companies need billing codes. But to get billing codes, they need commercialized products. And most often, those codes are not there because they don't have approval for those products. So the first time CMS proposed a fee schedule that includes digital therapeutics, but only three codes for FDA-cleared digital mental health treatment. For everything else, as yet, the CMS does not have a code to assign to digital therapeutics. And few health insurers or employers will pay for digital health products without proven validity and efficacy, which requires expensive pilot studies, clinical studies, and publications. As an example, there was a high-profile failure pair therapeutics, raised over $400 million, eventually went public, $1.6 billion, but was sold in bankruptcy for $6 million. So these are some of the hazards in the digital health space. And finally, about exit strategies. The choices for a startup are mergers or acquisitions, initial public offerings or IPOs, private equity, licensing without acquisition, or joint ventures. For pharma innovation, acquisition is the preferred route. Pharmaceutical startups predominantly exit through acquisitions rather than IPOs, particularly in the last few years. And the advantages are faster access to exit and get liquidity compared to the lengthy IPO process, reduce regulatory and market risks, and access to large commercial and manufacturing infrastructure that comes from the buyer. But the optimal timing for that is critical. It's usually upon conclusion of Phase 2 trials. So you have to raise enough money typically to get to Phase 2 trials, or if you're lucky, Phase 1 trial with early promise of efficacy. And at the same time, most acquirers are looking not just for a one-off drug, but usually a portfolio of at least two assets. IPOs are still possible, but they're typically for large and expensive biological pharma companies. And that's a way for you to both generate revenue and fund expensive R&amp;D and clinical trials. But as we've seen in the last couple of years, the IPO market has become very difficult to actually become successful in. For medical device, acquisition by strategic buyers is also the first choice and also the commonest outcome. Initial public offering IPOs can be done, but these are very, very exceptional. And there is still, however, an appetite amongst private equity to form strategic partnerships with medical device companies, particularly those with proven products and clear paths to profitability. For digital health, again, M&amp;A is the dominant path. It accounts for approximately 86% of all digital health exits since 2020. IPOs dropped from 19% of exits in 2020 to just 3% in 2024. And the preference for M&amp;A exits from several factors, which are listed here. You want to get into AI-driven, high-growth areas. We've had corrections after the pandemic. Lots of companies with promising technologies were unable to raise money. And big players such as Amazon and United Healthcare want to acquire these health tech firms to enhance their own digital health offerings. So in summary, there are three distinct paths for entrepreneurs: digital health, medical devices, and pharmaceuticals. Here are the development costs, ranging from $500 to $5 million for digital health to upwards of $2 billion for pharmaceuticals. Regulatory complexity is moderate for digital health, but a lot of uncertainty. And so you won't know three years from now whether the carpet will be pulled under you in terms of the regulatory aspects. Medical devices, it's a high bar, but it's established. And for pharma, it is still very extreme. Reimbursement: Digital health struggles with fundamental coverage recognition. Medical device is unpredictable in terms of the coverage determinations, particularly with the DRG problem that I mentioned. Pharmaceuticals has the most established reimbursement, despite formulary restrictions, but it is quite complex. Time to market: two to five years for digital health, three to seven years for medical devices, and 10 to 15 years for pharma. All of these come with high failure rate. And that is something that all of you as entrepreneurs know. You've got to be able to manage that risk. So summary, here's some strategic recommendations for entrepreneurs if you haven't made up your mind. Choose pharmaceuticals if you have deep scientific expertise and clinical connections. You can access significant capital, $50 million over multiple rounds. You're prepared for 10-plus years developmental cycles. And you're comfortable with extreme dilution and a binary outcome, success or failure, nothing in between. Choose medical devices if you have engineering and manufacturing expertise. You can secure at least $2 million in funding. You're targeting very specific clinical needs with clear regulatory pathways, and you can commit to a three- to seven-year development timeline. And finally, choose digital health if you prioritize speed to market and iteration capability. You have strong software and data science capabilities. You can tolerate high competition and funding volatility, which we are seeing right now. And you're comfortable with evolving regulatory landscapes. So critical elements for US market success: understand how healthcare reimbursement works, and it works differently for different sectors. Understand how the FDA regulates your sector. Establish strategic partnerships early on with US healthcare networks. Get the resource commitment. Make sure you have the money. But finally, focus on your core Japanese innovation strengths. Find the gaps in the US market. And we can talk about that. There are lots of gaps, surprisingly, where there's very little competition. And actually, those holes are where some of the Japanese strengths, particularly in pharma, are really, really strong. Growth momentum is critical. Get into partnerships early, collaborations early. Use the government's support, as was discussed in the earliest section, and look at case studies and success pathways very, very carefully. At Mayo, we offer an innovation partnership ecosystem. We have been highly successful. Here are the patents issued. In the last 10 years, $1.2 billion in net profit has been returned to Mayo Clinic through its partnerships and through its own inventions. Our technologies, in collaboration with our partners, are licensed throughout the world, and we've touched millions of lives. These are many ways that you can partner with Mayo Clinic. I will not go through this. But we can provide you access through large numbers of patients. We can provide you partnerships with strategics. And we can, of course, provide our own assets, which is the strength of our key opinion leaders in medicine in all specialties. We also have Platform, which is one of the largest digital health databases in the world, where you can test your new products in digital health, whether they are AI-based or not. And finally, the most critical collaboration is the human run. I give this example because I was giving a talk on a novel approach for a condition called Aegalasia. And I was giving a talk where Dr. Haru Inoue, who is the professor and director at Shoua University in Tokyo, he took that result, talked to me, went back home. The day he landed in Tokyo, he tried it out on human patients, published four cases. And we took a procedure that was a standard here in 2007, about 15 years ago, involving complex open surgery to something that's done entirely with an endoscope through the mouth. Takes, what, 15 minutes to do? And has changed the way we practice medicine, not only for this particular disease, but for a lot of conditions in Gia. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Pasrika. Please make your way off this stage. Thank you for your insightful presentation. Now, it is my pleasure to invite our next speaker, Ms. Gayatri Srinivasan, Executive Director, Corporate Relations at MIT, for her presentation.
Well, good afternoon. I'm on my toes here because the podium is too high for me. But good afternoon. And I want to first thank Jethro and Meti for inviting me and giving me this opportunity to present at GHEC. Today, I'm going to be talking about the MIT innovation ecosystem. Before that, I just wanted to share a little bit about me. I'm a scientist by training. I don't science anymore, but my whole life in the dark side, if you will, has been around supporting science. I started my career at MIT's licensing office, did licensing of technologies in many universities before I moved from licensing to a startup, doing business development and strategic alliances. And then I moved to Emory University. I did industry partnerships and became the head of corporate and foundation relations and moved to MIT to head corporate relations. What is different about MIT? At MIT, innovation is defined as the process of taking an idea from inception to impact. And as you can see, one of the... This is the photograph of Dr. Bob Langer. Many of you may already know something about him. He has been a professor at MIT for about 42 years. And in the 42 years, he has developed 42 companies. So that is the kind of presence we have. Bob is just one example of the kinds of faculty we have at MIT. But the reason MIT is successful in innovation is because of the definition of how we think about innovation. These are some companies that are formed by MIT-ers. And I'm not saying MIT, I'm not saying faculty, I'm not saying alumni. I'm saying MIT people. Some of them are faculty, some of them are students, some of them are alumni, and some researchers. So these are all known names, right? I mean, none of them are unknown to us. And some of them are products that we use every day. So I just wanted to share this sampling with you. And a little bit about MIT. MIT has 17,000 employees, about 1,100 faculty members. That has always been the case. MIT has not really gone beyond 1,100 faculty members. About 4,300 researchers, 4,500 undergraduate students, 7,300 graduate students. About 4,300 researchers, 4,500 undergraduate students, 7,300 graduate students, 30% international students. And I did want to highlight 105 Nobel Prize winners, and two of them are from last year from the economics department. We do focus a lot on industry-sponsored program and partnerships. We have 65-plus DLCI or research lab centers and programs, $840 million that come in the form of sponsored research at MIT on campus. I'm not including Lincoln Labs, which is also a part of MIT. 600 U.S. patent filed, 323 issued patents, $49 million in licensing revenues, 24 companies formed in FY24. And I wanted to highlight that out of industry-sponsored research, about half of them come from industry liaison program, which I'll talk to you a little later. We also have about five focused presidential initiatives, and there are two of them that are growing, being developed. But I wanted to talk about these five specifically because they are more on the science and R and D space. The Initiative for New Manufacturing, the Human Insight Collaborative, the Climate Project by MIT, MIT Heals, which is in life science and healthcare, MIT Generative AI Impact Consortium. MIT Heals Collaborative was launched late last year, and it enables... There are partners that enable this. One is Mass General and Brigham, Analog Devices, Novo Nordisk, Hood Foundation, Biswas Family Foundation, and the founder and CEO of flagship pioneering Nubar Affian. And in addition to that, I did want to highlight some of the affiliated institutes around MIT that help with the healthcare innovation ecosystem: Broad Institute, Koch Institute, Whitehead Institute, and the Reagan Institute. And you may have heard about ARPA-H. They chose Cambridge as their newest hub late in FY23. Now, let me talk to you about the MIT ecosystem. An ecosystem does not happen just by just research and virtual space, right? There is a physical space, which is the Kendall Square. And this is representing the Kendall Square ecosystem in 1980, which is mostly an industrial parking lot. Moving from 1980 to 2005, you can already see a lot of change in the ecosystem. And this is what it looks like currently in 2025. This is the Longfellow Bridge that connects Boston to Cambridge, and this is the Charles River. And our office is right at the tip of MIT connecting with Boston. This part of the triangle is the MIT area, and this is the Kendall Square area. This is represented in a more two-dimensional way. The maroon highlights the MIT campus, and it's porous, right? I mean, the MIT campus is porous with the Kendall Square ecosystem. The magenta is the biopharma industry. The turquoise blue is the IT and data companies. The green, light green, is energy-related companies in the ecosystem. And the blue is venture capital in the ecosystem. All these things are porous and work together to make MIT Innovation Ecosystem what it is. We talk about the ecosystem in five stakeholder model. This is provided by a lot of research that was worked on by Dr. Phil Button and Dr. Fiona Murray. And this five-stakeholder approach is about entrepreneurship, risk capital supporting the entrepreneur, corporate activities around the ecosystem, government presence in terms of supporting through capital and through subsidies to support that ecosystem, and of course, in this case, MIT, but also universities in general, all working together in concert to make this work as an innovation ecosystem. And this is showing... This is actually a statue that's there in this tiny park near Kendall MIT train station. It says, "The most innovative ecosystem or square mile on the planet." And that's actually been captured and is true. I wanted to talk about entrepreneurship at MIT, which is supported by 200-plus entrepreneurial initiatives at MIT. This is just a sampling of a few different initiatives. And as you can see, at every stage of development of the startup, there are at least 10 initiatives that help support them. And MIT Startup Exchange is one of the initiatives that come out of our office. And when I talk about our office, our office is MIT Corporate Relations, which comprises of two programs which are interlinked. The MIT Industrial Liaison Program, which is a membership-driven program that supports 200-plus member companies across the globe. And we are the portal for the member companies to MIT. And then we have Startup Exchange, which is integrated with the Industry Liaison Program, which facilitates access to 800-plus startups in the ecosystem to our member companies. What do we do for our member companies? We help them understand and learn from the MIT ecosystem. We provide webinars, conferences, executive briefings. We give them discounted pricing to MIT professional ed, exec ed, and open learning. We allow the member companies to discover and solve problems by facilitating meetings with faculty members, with the different lab centers and initiatives, strategic executive education, assistance with identifying opportunities for sponsored research, licensing agreements, or, you know, visiting scholars, and anything else that you can think of. We also, through our programming, allow for networking opportunities among the 200-plus member companies, access to MIT students, and access to MIT startups. Oh, sure. So just wanting to show that, you know, our presence, we have about 30% in North America, 40% in Asia, 20% in Europe, and 6% in South America, and the rest everywhere else. And this is a huge global presence of our member companies. So when I say networking opportunities amongst their peers, it's truly global networking opportunities. And we are here in the Global Healthcare Challenge Conference. So I did want to highlight the member companies that are in the pharmaceutical and medical device and diagnostic space. So as you can see, these are represented in that cohort. And we are in Japan, so I did want to also highlight the Japanese companies that are members to our industry liaison program, and the Japanese staff members that support these Japanese member companies. I did want to talk about a few use cases on how we help companies. So for example, Lonza is a CDMO, and they had a specific challenge around, you know, managing and monitoring production of cultures within their CDMO facilities. And so we connected them with a faculty member that specializes in this area, and they are off to, you know, a specific project with that faculty member. Another example is Schneider Electric had wanted to work on edge AI, and we had a startup in edge AI, Prescient. And through this collaboration, we were able to connect the Prescient company with Schneider and gave them an industrial application to their AI, edge AI technology. And here are many more examples of collaboration between our member companies and startups in the ecosystem. And with that, I wanted to thank you. And if you have any questions, I would love for you to reach out to me. I'm gayatri@mit.edu, not my... My name is Gayatri, like Gayatri Srinivasan with an H, but my email address is gayatri without the H. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Srinivasan, for your valuable presentation.